Good evening, welcome. Thank you for coming, everybody. This is our second online Zoom Town Hall, our fourth for the year because we also had our housing and our building Town Hall specifically about the renovations. So glad you all could make it this evening. My name is Andrea and I'm one of your elected volunteer board of directors. And you have a series of your neighbors who you've elected to try to act on your behalf to carry out your interests. We have the staff that's working with us that are on the call and we also have the great project management company and contractors that are working on the big stuff. So I've got a bit of an agenda to share with you. We're going to try to get through this very quickly. We'll ask everybody to be on mute for the duration of the meeting and then we'll take any questions at the end, okay? Especially since that might be more of personal nature, we'll, we won't record the discussion, but we'll just record this information so that we can email it out to anybody who might have been unavailable. So let's get into things. Please press mute if you're just logging on. So good evening. Once again, thank you for coming to Ellen McGreal's second Zoom Town Hall, fourth overall Town Hall for 2023. We just wanted to welcome you to come and chat about some critical items. We want to start off with a bit of an update to tell you something we're celebrating, highlight about the survey, let you know about, remind you about some of the bylaws, both city and co-op. Nicole wants to highlight some details about arrears management and how it's being implemented and sharpened. Want to remind you about how the process is gonna go for that bulk cable and Rogers Internet that you all voted on the last AGM. And what people are very excited for, I'm sure, and update about our renovation projects from our fabulous team at CMS. Those are the project managers that help coordinate the day-to-day of this stuff. We'll highlight a couple of reminders and then of course, member questions. So please hold your questions till the end. So first and foremost, I just wanted to tell you a big congrats. Let's see those emoji reactions of joy and celebration. We won something. Can you believe it? Ellen McGreal won the CHFT.
This co-op proved the relationship with management.
Can you hear? Nicole, give me a thumbs up.
Undertook major capital repairs, addressed many maintenance issues.
That's us they're talking about.
Reduced the arrears significantly. The capital projects included the modernization of the elevators, hot water tanks and furnace replacement, installation of air conditioning in the townhouses and kitchen and bathroom renovations. The co-op has welcomed refugees, provided accessible units, and redoubled their effort to support seniors. They've introduced a food pantry where members can donate non-perishable food items to other members. I am very pleased to announce that the winner of this year's achievement of the year award is Ellen McGreal Housing Cooperative.
Yay!
Congratulations, Ellen McGreal Housing Cooperative.
So the nice thing about that, yes, you can celebrate emojis, clap, see those happy hands. This actually gives us a small cash contribution as well, so we're excited to have won this achievement award. This is from CHFT, that is the Canadian Housing Federation of Toronto. You've met some of their people. Sometimes we have a volunteer from their organization to come and speak and chair at our board meetings, our general meetings and such. So we just wanted to let you know that our co-op with all of your help and participation made this possible to win this 2023 achievement award. Paula, are you okay to leave the question to the end? What's that?
I pressed the wrong button.
No worries. That was your celebration hand. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So we're very happy and you're showing up and you're being a part of things here, just coming to something like this is a part of that help. Another thing that we're asking you to do right now is we have emailed a survey out. It is a Google form. So it's a free online forum that you can use to do a survey. We're gonna do this every year. And this is just a way to go ahead and make sure that we get as much of your feedback as possible. And we're getting to hear your concerns and votes on things. And so if you can make sure that you fill out the survey, our intern Boom Boom is going to put that in the chat now. So if you didn't see it in your email from Violet this week, you can look at it in the chat. You can simply click on it and go ahead and fill out the survey. It will just take a few minutes. The staff is gonna refer to this to help double check. We didn't miss things. They didn't miss things. It's gonna help with some debates about timing of construction, start time, really critical questions and anything else that you want to share with your staff or your board of directors. We're gonna look at this together. And we want to thank, thanks to everybody who filled it out so far too. It's really important. We want to remind everybody about the bylaws. It's not just about our opinions. The staff is not just making up things as they go along. Your volunteer board of directors, your management company, your staff that's here, we're all guided by our bylaws. The members over time edit and make these bylaws. And so it's important you read the bylaws and review the processes and policies. One of the things we're gonna do is we're going to try to make a simple descriptive of the bylaws to help everybody understand them. That's what our intern is currently working on to help us. Management, all of our staff and even you as members have different legal obligations. And so remember, a co-op is different than a private building. It's different than Toronto housing. It's different than owning your own house. Even though we don't own this, we all have a responsibility as members to contribute. And so we all need to figure out how our responsibilities and try to adhere to the bylaws to make sure we're having the best place possible to live and that it's a safe space. Things like the garbage expense that we're having from people using garbage incorrectly or the illegal parking complaints about sound, all these kind of things make it really difficult and cost us extra. Workplace safety, people harassing or saying things that might be abusive to our staff, this kind of stuff puts us at risk of being taken to the Human Rights Tribunal, being sued. And if we are sued, if anybody sues anybody in the co-op, we're all being sued. So it's critical. We all take our responsibility and help with this. And members can edit the bylaws and vote on the bylaws, but we're governed with legislative obligations. So we just wanted to remind everybody that. That you should have a copy of those bylaws. We can give them to you printed or electronically, whatever you prefer. And we're gonna work on like a document, a little bit of a booklet to help have simpler terms to explain some of these important bylaws, okay? So bylaws are important. Arrears, I'm gonna pass it off to Nicole. Your manager.
Thank you, Andrea. In 2023, we were able to have a zero percent increase, rent increase. However, I'm proud to say that for this year, we were able to increase the rent by a small percentage at 1.5%. The Board of Directors and management are proud that we did not evict any households through the peak of the COVID crisis. The Board of Directors and management's goal is not to evict members, but to work with each one of you who are in a difficult financial situation. Communication is extremely important to us. I do want to highlight as of today, the arrears are at $61,000. $26,000 of that, of the arrears is due to three, three households. As part of your, as part of your bylaw, housing charges are to be paid on or before the first day of each month, including the water charges for the members in the townhomes. The co-op relies on this money to pay off our loan and other expenses every month. I want to remind you all that rent can be paid through tenant pay. If members do not have a tenant pay account number, please contact the office and we will be more than happy to assign you the account number. Paying rent in advance can be a good idea for some people depending on their financial situation. It can also help ensure that you won't fall behind on rent payments. So that's another option. However, due to the number of members paying their rent late, unfortunately, the office will be implementing late fees as of January 1st. PPM's process for notice to appears involving housing charges is issuing suspended eviction. So a suspended eviction is when the board can evict a member right away if the member does not adhere to the board's payment plan. However, the past few years, the board, the Board of Directors were generous and assigned members a conditional agreement. So in a conditional agreement is if the member does not comply with the payment plan, they would be brought to the board again, instead of going straight to the landlord and tenant board. But because of the recent failed payment plans and lack of communication, the more may, the Board of Directors may start issuing suspended evictions moving forward. I just want to say we're all part of the co-op. We are a community. Please let's continue working together for improvement by addressing any remaining arrears to strengthen our shared commitment. Your efforts and contributions will make a huge difference in improving our co-op. So thank you very much.
Thanks for that, Nicole, and thanks, everybody. So we just wanted to be really transparent and clear that, you know, we, we as a board of directors sometimes get yelled at for having a bleeding heart. And we know that everybody has times where they have problems. And this discussion and opportunity to come before the board and make payment arrangements, it's supposed to be for emergencies, you know? Somebody has a temporary layoff, somebody has a health crisis. We want to be able to work with you and have everybody stay and be neighborly about it. But we have a business to run and we need to keep rents low. And when someone is not paying their arrears, the rest of us are paying it. And so I'm sure everybody can understand. We want to be compassionate, but we also have to make sure we run the business properly and try to keep paying all of our bills, make that mortgage payment and keep our housing charges low. You all know if you're talking to people of what's going on in Toronto, people are getting rent evicted, rates, rents are going up. It's very difficult to find places. And we're, so we're needing to run a tight ship to make sure things are okay. So it's not personal, but we do have to start moving forward more quickly with evictions and going to the landlord and tenant board because as, as the amount is seen here, you can imagine that's a big amount, right? So thank you for that, Nicole, and thank you for your patience in working with all of us. We all have our crisis moments. And if you have any further questions about that, you can speak to the staff. We just wanted to, while you're here today, remind you of next steps about the bulk cable or internet package. So at your last general meeting, the members decided to go forward with the bulk package about the Rogers cable. So it's not gonna be the same Rogers cable that we currently have. It's gonna be something called Rogers Ignite. And you have to take action. You have to call to book. So I just wanted to let you know, I actually got my notice from Rogers today. And so you probably got it in the mail, maybe yesterday or this week. And it says, important information regarding your account from Rogers. If you get that, don't throw it out. It's not an advertisement. It's your letter of this image here. And it's letting you know your next steps, which is including to call this number. Don't call it until December 15th. As of December 15th, you can call and book your new package where the technician is going to come in sometime in January and switch out those old hefty boxes for the sleek ignite system. And if you're able to drop by next Wednesday to our holiday party, the Rogers representative will be there once again, like they were at our AGM, to show you this process, to explain it. And they'll also be at the seniors event tomorrow. So for our seniors on the call who are coming to the drop-in in the day tomorrow, you can see Natasha as well. Okay, so that's the Rogers update. Make sure you take action and call. A few months from now, you would lose that cable without taking this action. We want to remind everybody with regards to repairs and renovation, fill out a work order. If you have something that's not been done, fill out a work order for any issue. Our intern Boom Boom is gonna put the link to our website in the chat. You can still do your hard copy paper if you want, but it helps if you put it electronically so that we can more easily track it and say to the staff, hey, where's this? What's going on here? And the staff can manage how to do things in group to volume buy and fix things. We do not have enough money for everything. So what's going to happen is that we need everybody to take good care of the units that are currently being fixed. If you have new windows coming in, for example, you can't put holes in them or you avoid the warranty. If you've gotten a revised kitchen or new appliances, there's an expectation that you take good care of them. If you have any kind of leak suspecting of mold or pests, please put in a work order right away. Those should be handled immediately. Money or not, we gotta figure out how to take care of those. And CMS will go next and give us a highlight of the very long difficult renovation project under. I'm living in one of the blocks that are under the rentals now. And I'm unpleasantly surprised with the length of time and the layers of disruption to the, to the situation. But you know, it's better than a rent eviction. If you look at our friends in Regent Park, if you look at some of those townhouses on Victoria Park over by Cassandra, you know, that behind Parkway there? Some places that get run down end up getting completely replaced. We obviously don't want that. We had to try to get these experts to, you know, do this building condition assessment, have project managers, have different experts help us analyze, get that refinancing money and fix up the place. So that priority list was created with a lot of thoughtfulness. And we're undergoing that now. We're still short a million dollars for that project, which we're still working on. And that's why it's so critical. We continue to save money and increase revenues where possible. Washrooms and kitchens are being renovated, but they're kind of just going one by one as the monthly maintenance budget allows. We hopefully got the ugliest ones all taken care of. And then we're continuing to plan for capital planning, new fencing, repaving the roads, the flooring in your home. All of that kind of aesthetic stuff is not on the to-do list yet. We don't have the money. But with good governance, we can continue to get the money or maybe more refinancing in a few years. But obviously, we have to be very careful of how we spend our money and how we use financing because we got this loan in before the interest rates went high. So we probably wouldn't take any other loans for a while because interest rates have really gone up. So we've gotta just make sure we stick on budget and stick to the plan. So we just wanted to give you that idea because we're, you know, gonna experience a big financial crunch again 10 years from now. So here's the update from CMS. I'll stop sharing so that they can share and go ahead.
Thank you, Andrea. Let me share my screen.
Thank you. So Simon is one of our project managers from an organization, a Scarborough Business, that has been expert to work on a variety of construction, including co-ops.
Yes, thank you. And good evening, everyone. My name is Simon, the project coordinator from CMS Building Consultants for these projects. Today, I would like to share with you some information about the projects. Yeah, so, yeah, so in this presentation, I will provide some updates on the progress and what you should expect. So let's dive in to the apartment project first. So so far, we have performed concrete repair to the balconies, as you can see here in this photo, and also applied new waterproofing. We also applied new coating to the exterior wall to achieve a refreshing look. We also performed garage concrete repair and also window markups. So for, the work for the balconies is performed drop by drop as per the drop plan shown on the top right corner. For the self-elevation, including drop one all the way to drop six, concrete repair, waterproofing and wall recoating has been completed. For the north elevation facing Suez Row, including drop seven to 11, concrete repair and waterproofing is now in progress. We are expecting to complete the work by the end of January 2024. And due to the cold weather, the wall recoating work for the north elevation will resume in March 2024 and expected to be completed by the end of April. And for the window replacement work, we have experienced delay on the manufacturer end. The estimated delivery date is pushed to mid-January 2024. The installation work for the whole building will take approximately two to three months to complete. And for the railing manufacturer also delayed the delivery to the end of January. And the installation work for the whole building will take approximately one month to complete. Yeah, and so as a member, what you should expect? For the balcony remedial work, there will be construction noise, vibration, dusts, etc. Workers will be working at your balcony. So for privacy reasons, please close your blinds. Scaffold or swing stage will be set up outside your balcony. After the new railing has been installed and tested, the management office will confirm your balcony is ready for use. And for the upcoming window replacement work, please be reminded to remove any curtains or blinds. The new windows will be installed on the same day of removal. As there will be dust generated during the work, we would suggest you to cover your belongings and furniture, etc. Providing six feet, provide six feet clearance from the windows and also maintain a accessible path from the entrance to the windows for the workers to work. The contractor will do a preview to your unit prior to the work to make sure that your unit is ready. So that's all for the apartment projects and let's move on to the townhouse. And again, let's, let me give you some updates on the progress. So far, we have performed investigative leakage repair to foundation walls and also re-roofing. And for, to install the new building envelope at buildings one to four, we have removed the existing stack of finish. We also performed structural repair. And we also installed new wall sheathing. You can see the yellow board. There are the new wall sheathing. After that, we also applied the new liquid air barrier. You can see here the blue, blue stuff on the walls. And then we also installed the new insulation board onto the sheathing and then applied the base coat. That's the gray stuff on the walls. So but we not stopped at here. We will apply top coat and also caulking. We will install new sidings to the walls. And there will be attic insulation to be done. Also, there will be replacement of your windows and doors and wood deck and wood stair. So for the window and door replacement, the estimated delivery date is by the end of January. And let's take a look on the construction plan. Informed by the co-op based on the results of the unit survey, there are some blocks that have the needs of urgent repair. Based on the request, the contractor has revised the overall construction sequence as shown in this plan, the blue ones, stage one, two and three. The work will be commenced in winter 2023. And for the green ones, stage four, five and six, oh, sorry, five and six, the works will be commenced in spring 2024. And for the orange ones, stage seven, eight and nine, the works will be commenced in summer. And finally, the gray one, stage 10, will be commenced in fall. So for each, each stage, the work duration is approximately two months subject to the weather condition. The project has been delayed approximately a month because of the unexpected structural repair to address the damages found in the wood structure after removing the existing walls sheathing. However, the team is still targeting to complete the project within the original timeframe, which is before the end of 2024. So this wraps up the progress section. Let's move on to the next part. What you should expect. So during the envelope remedial work, again, there will be construction noise, vibration, dust and odor. You may consider the construction work as an assembly line, not a linear one, but around your building. Works will be carried out throughout the whole construction period. Even if you don't see anyone working outside your units, you may still hear some noise or feel some vibration. Yeah, please keep that in mind. And the vibration may cause your wall mounted stuff to fall off. So we would recommend you to remove all wall mounted belongings. And during the work, your window will be covered for protection. Please close your blinds or curtains for privacy. Scaffold, scaffold will be set up around the entire building. Access, your building front and back will be limited. And we would also recommend you to cover your belongings in your patio to prevent from contamination such as those blue stuff or the gray stuff. And for the installation of the installation board, the contractor has, have to do a process called rasping. This process will help to achieve a flat surface of the installation board to receive the new finishes. So the start, there will be styrofoam bits generated during that process. You will, you will see it like a snowfall. But please be ensure that the crew will do their best to vacuum most of the styrofoam bits during that process. And we understand that there are some exterior mounted surfaces such as mailboxes or doorbells, etc. Those items will disrupt, interrupted during the construction. We understand that the mailbox is mainly for receiving the co-op's notices and during the construction period, while the mailbox is temporarily removed, the notice will be emailed to you and also the hard copy will be taped to your door. And during the construction, temporary lighting will also be provided. After the Christmas holiday, the contractor will start doing attic insulation. The roof hatch should be located at the closet at your bedroom. Please clear the closets and maintain a path to access from the entrance to the hatch for the crew to work. As mentioned in the previous section, during the window replacement work, please remove curtains and blinds, maintain six feet of clearance and also provide access from the entrance to the windows. And last but not least, during the wood deck and wood stair replacement, your wood deck and stair will be temporarily removed. And they cannot be used until the new railing has been installed. And once again, the management office will confirm when it is ready for use. We do understand that the project is quite a long process and thank you very much for your patience. Yeah, that's all from of my presentation and I would like to pass the stage to the co-op.
Thank you so much for that, Simon. So after he stops sharing, I'll go back to my slides next. Really appreciate all of that information. Thank you so much for all of the, and all of the hard work of your team and the awesome construction team at Winford that have been doing great. I want to just mention a couple of other things. So some of that would be repetitive to you for those who have come to the in-person Town Halls. But we wanted to do this meeting so that we could record it. And you could pause and go back to that image. You can share this with your neighbors. Remember that a lot of this information, like those details that Simon noted, they will be put in the memos to you. We've got a really detailed process where their team and the contractors are looking at the memos before they go out. So you'll get those memos at your door. The, all these details will be in there. We'll try to reiterate that on Facebook in these kind of Town Halls. And also on the lobby, we're trying to put the schedule ahead of schedule to give you a heads up in the apartment building lobby and beside the silver mailboxes for the townhouses on the brown board. When you're looking at those images that Simon presented, the top is tools. You can see the streets. So you can try to see what block is yours. And we're doing our best to work with the contractors to have a two weeks update. Members have requested this and we're continuing to ask them to be able to give that to you. But keep in mind, sometimes maybe something comes early, something comes late. So things do adjust, but we're doing our best to work with that. When you're, when you're, if you're in one of the townhouses, you might consider getting stuff delivered to a neighbor. People have had a really hard time finding our unit numbers with them being off. If you've got your own doorbell or light fixtures that you want to keep, please make sure you take them off before they start the work after you get those memos delivered to you. So again, this will be recorded so that you can share with anybody and we'll take a quick Q and A after. But we hope this was helpful. While it's a very grueling process and I, I for one have been finding the layers to this very stressful. It's very needed. It's analyzed with experts. Like I said, it's the building condition assessment. Engineers, the expert project management engineers at CMS, the, the, the sound RFP process, the Winford team and the contribution of neighbors too. You all speak up and have your voice heard and we share all of those ideas. And there's, you know, weekly meetings on this, daily discussion and there's lots of smart people working on making sure this is done effectively. So a couple of reminders. Don't forget to read the emails that are sent, complete the surveys. If you're able to join the If you're able to join the Elma Grill Facebook group, that would be great, cuz sometimes we can get things up there quicker. Attend all these kind of meetings, town halls, share the info with your neighbors, the more we can help each other out. Uh Myrow is one of the ones under the turmoil right now, and it's been so helpful speaking to each other and looking out for each other. That's really how we're getting through this. Uh put your work orders in writing, follow up if you have to follow up. First of all, refer to the list, some things are just on pause, we can't fix things for aesthetic, we can only fix health and safety. And there, if you could please.
Excuse me?
On mute. Please make sure you're on mute, thank you. And um make sure that you, if you have a a work order that's not been handled, just follow up once in writing. If that's not followed up, request to bring your matter before the board, we meet every month. We can have a window of time to address your matter if it's put in writing. Or we can have a window of time to have people invited to speak as well, and and that can help us to continue to refine the process and make things go smoothly. But you can imagine it with a hundred and sixty units, if everybody keeps knocking on the door and calling and calling. When's this, when's that, why isn't my unit having this? The staff can't get to their work and it doesn't allow them to get back to the thing that they have to do that we're asking them to do. So please try to use those office hours when attempting to speak to staff, cut down on speaking to staff. I'm always yelling at them, they're too friendly and they're speaking to everybody too long, we gotta keep that for the social times. So that they can get their work done, like this planning and this follow-up, that's so critical. And speaking of social time, we have the holiday drop-in to next week, our senior drop-in that we're gonna be doing more often tomorrow. And please, in the survey, we have the call to action about the committees. And what we'd love is if those of you that are interested in being involved could take leads on committees. We can have a social committee, a maintenance committee, we can have people taking ideas about other things that members are raising and. Bringing that to the forefront, we're all responsible to make this a better place. And so working together, we can continue to sustain these low rents that we've been having for the last few years. And continue to get more and more to fix up things nicer and nicer, so we can have a place that we're very proud of, so thank you everybody for coming. That's a wrap on the content, just a reminder of our two events here. And I'll pause the recording, and if you have a question, you can use your hand raise emoji or type in the chat. Those of you who wanna go off the call, you can now, and those who wanna stay and discuss will will take about twenty minutes of this Q and A, okay? Thanks everybody, appreciate this, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen now and just take uh questions as they come in. Oh, thank you, you're so welcome. I should remind everybody that if you didn't pick up your fire extinguisher last year at the holiday party. Please don't forget to pop by next Wednesday evening for the holiday party and pick up your free fire extinguisher, okay? Uh we've dropped salt to all the houses, we want all of the people in the building, all the people in houses to have their fire extinguisher. We're all responsible for the safety and keeping costs down, even in we, even when we have insurance claims, that can make our insurance go up too, right? So we all wanna try to make sure that our places are safe and well taken care of as po- possible. This is gonna help make sure that we have those low rents and the continuing to fix stuff, cuz we want those good floors. We want that beautiful repaved ground out there, right, and and uh those aren't even on our. They're just a wishlist right now, like when I shop on Amazon and it's gotta go to the wishlist, it's not in the cart, you know? Thanks everybody, so if you're, if you don't have any questions, you're welcome to come off. And otherwise, you're welcome to stay on, ask any questions, so I have a question, that what time is the seniors thing tomorrow? Allow me to refer the poster again and remind everybody that tomorrow's drop-in in the community room for seniors. Just that, you know, have a comfortable place for you to have some discussion, a sense of community, get to know one another. And tomorrow's guest is gonna be Natasha, she's gonna come from Rogers for our seniors to get a little more detailed hands-on about. What's happening with this new Rogers package, it's from twelve thirty to two thirty in the party room in the building, okay? So that's tomorrow, and then our holiday drop-in. Next, uh December thirteenth, Wednesday from five to seven in the party room, and we'll have hot cocoa. And treats and sandwiches and uh pick, we have the list of who didn't pick up their fire extinguisher, so be sure to grab that. And Natasha from Rogers will also be there at the holiday drop-in, but hope you can come in, say hello. And don't forget to fill out the quiz as well, so we can get people going on committees, because it's honestly too much work for the few of us that are on the board. We need your help, we need your support, uh we can't be cutting into our lives so much, thank you so much, thank you everybody. Uh Byron, you have a question?
Yes, in regards to the um. The hatch for the attic, we have to clear out the entire closet.
Yes, enough room for them to get in the closet safely, because think about it, right? This is what I underestimated when they came, they did the sa- I was one of the people where they did the sample windows. And what I underestimated, when they said clear a path for the windows, right? I thought, well, I've cleared a path, you can get to my window, what I didn't anticipate is that they need to take a ladder in. They need to take the wide, heavy window in, so you need to have a wide-bodied frame person walking in with something heavy. You need to have, you know, picture a big-bodied person trying to get up in the ladder into your attic, so we need to make sure that that space is nice and clear. Yes, please, thank you. And and that, you'll have some time for that one, and you will get a notice in advance of when it's happening, we just wanna give you the heads up, cuz I don't know about you all, but like I needed to declutter from time. I can't just be like, oh sure, come over tomorrow, right, this required some decluttering in advance. One of my neighbors has helped me with the decluttering, is going, yes, she did need some help, right? We need to, uh you you know, purge and declutter, which um Nicole will order us a nice extra garbage bin over the holidays. So all of the wrapping and extra items can get in there, because I know garbage management is hard for some members. With especially when we have big families, right friends? Okay, that's great, thank you so much, everybody, anyone else?